Let us pray. Lord God, we just come to you tonight seeking your wisdom, Lord, as we do the business of the city, Lord. I just want to say Merry Christmas, Lord, and thank you for everything you've done for all of us and look over us and our city employees as they do their work. Ask your name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. It's called a meeting to order for December 15th, 2022. Lane, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Let's lay just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Nancy. Chris Foster?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Melissa Cho?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
James Lay? Sharon Williams?
Here.
Rebecca Prince? The Press? And Mayor Griffin?
Here.
Off the record show, we have a quorum. Okay, first up, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve them from November 17th, 2022, City Council meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we need an approval of payments journals from November 1st to November 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Nancy? Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we need approval of Street Fund Financial Statement Sanitation General Fund, Community Center O and M, and miscellaneous funds dated November 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Any discussion? Nancy? Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. For your supervisors' reports, do you have any questions for our supervisors? Okay. Yeah, Brian's here. Okay, next, Beau Reynolds is here with Train to give us a presentation for the energy audit.
Are these ours?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Beau Reynolds with Train. We had, we participated in RFP RFQ through the Energy Office that was issued by the city, and we're awarded this for the investment grade audit to do energy service performance contracting. I haven't met, but we have it presented to the board, and usually we do that before now, so we just wanted a quick opportunity to give you a quick update and go through the timeline. We are looking to wrap this up at the end of January. So kind of in the interim right now, want to give everyone an update before going into the holidays, and then plan is to be back out here with subcontractors enjoying final pricing after the holidays.
I heard it make a noise, so.
Where were you standing earlier? You make it stand on that side. You just want to sit right up here.
You can sit right here if you want.
Yeah, right here.
Make yourself at home.
Yeah, just make yourself at home. We don't mind.
It's even got a microphone for the audience.
All right, well, I'll sit up here.
Come on.
There you go. You're gonna be the attorney for the night.
There you go.
I can sit down, too.
Yes.
All right. So this is just an illustration of how this works. The goal is to reduce operational savings, mostly through energy, but also through operational savings, and to continue that where what this allows the city to do is essentially have additional budgets that are collateralized against the savings. So it's not additional revenue, no additional sales tax. The city doesn't have to raise any new revenue. What this allows is the upgrades and improvements to be done through energy savings and collateralized against that. So here's where we are today. Main purpose of this is to give everyone an update. This is a timeline where kind of where things have stood so far. The goal is to get back at the end of this month and early January to the final scopes of work, get final pricing, and then provide our investment audit report to the city at the end of January. The rest of this is just general timelines based off of expectations on the construction market in general. So our primary focus was addressing lighting in all of city buildings. Pretty much, we're going to look at the fire station, the new municipal building, this building, and the aquatic center, as well as the exterior lighting. New building automation controls for all of these buildings, and includes the lighting and HVAC for this. I know this is a big one. This is the Aquatic Center Pool Pack, the dehumidification and ventilation, and then redoing some of the mechanical air and ventilation, and then just some miscellaneous HVAC improvements. The expanded scope, which we'll get to a little bit later, that includes replacing the boiler and some additional VFD and pumps related to there. And then we have some additional options that we'll just go, that's not the primary thing, but that's where we've got some pricing on that, and we can go over that. So one big priority was this building. This building, from a benchmarking standpoint, does use a good bit of energy. What we noticed is there's really not a lot of scheduling, and there's not a lot of opportunities with the current system. So by upgrading and doing a good bit with the HVAC and the lighting controls, we believe that we can drive significant savings that will help pay for a lot of the needs, which will in turn free up some of the budget that was originally supposed to go to this building, which should be able to kind of help offset some of the cost increases on some of the capital projects. So big thing, this is just visuals. What you have here now is, you can't really access it remotely. It's PC desktop-based. What we're looking at is everything being web-based. Will give the city a lot more leeway for alarming and control and go stay on top of it. These are just, the big focus now is to be able to provide ease of use and just make it easier for the maintenance staff. So this is the other big, big area. We're doing, we're already working with an engineer, looking at redesigning some of the airflow and the ductwork there. One big thing that we feel that would help with the new unit is relocating the condenser. We know that the existing unit hasn't really functioned since 2010, 11, or 12, but we think we can get this going. This is, this is a big cost, and so this is a, not an energy savings, so the energy savings from other items are, we're looking to pay for this. One thing that I, we're going to continue to explore, this is not of interest to the city initially, but due to the Investment Inflation Reduction Act, investment tax credits, we wanted to at least propose and to show what that would look like. You've got an aging chiller outside, it's, it's fine, it doesn't need replaced, but it's at the end of its life. With the investment test credit, we believe that you could potentially replace that and go with a, what they call, energy storage system for a 50% tax credit. We're going to continue to work on that and have something ready by January from the U.S. Treasury and Department of Energy. That just shows kind of how the energy storage works. You're essentially offsetting some of the peak hours to reduce your energy costs and running ice at night. Lighting is a big area there. We don't spend too much time there. We're looking at Level 1 and Level 2, mostly just replacing fixtures and reducing costs. One other thing that we're kind of looking at as a side project, we don't know if this would even go in this phase, is looking at the street lighting project and trying to wrap that in from a budgetary standpoint. We know there's some easement DO2 issues there, but, you know, with a soul or new aesthetics to kind of beauty up downtown, what we're seeing is we can take some of the energy savings and wrap that in with some other capital funds.
Can I ask a question? Isn't that intergies, whole and lights and all that?
Yes.
Yes. They would have to take it down.
Oh, we would be putting up our own?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just, it's a very small thing that we're just kind of looking at, just that analysis, because I think the city's already looked at some budgetary items for some beautification downtown.
Yeah, that's in the bond.
So I hope I don't lose everyone here. This is, this is really where we're getting into the numbers, and we wanted to give everyone a recap. The base project that we're kind of working on, and that includes the community center, the aquatic center, the new municipal building, and the fire station, and some other miscellaneous stuff within the city. The big portion of that is the pool pack. What our company does is an ESCO is guarantee the energy savings. If we don't meet those, if the city doesn't meet that, we would cut a check back to the city. If you, you have the extra savings, you keep all those savings. So that's guaranteed. This is just a plug number. Again, these are budgetary due to the volatility of the construction market and inflation. We were trying to be conservative here. What this does is showing your total annual savings cost avoidance. Then over a 15-year term, typically, these are 15-year terms, we're going to look at a 10-year revolving loan with the Arkansas Energy Office. Due to the fact that this building's on First Security or First Electric, there really is an option for incentives that would be for intergie, but the new municipal building is on intergie, and we believe that there's enough tax credit there will offset that. So this is the base project we're working on to try to finalize a number and try to get that number down. The large portion of that is the pool pack and modifications there. The expanded project we're talking about is some additional HVAC and boiler, and then down here is just some other options that we're going to put together. Most likely, these won't go for it, but these could be a Phase 2 type. The one thing that I think is going to be interesting is just this, mainly because of the huge tax credits. And that's just a way that for the city to learn, you know, more about that deferred maintenance, that's an upcoming cost that will happen at some point, because the chiller's not going to last forever. So big things, financial options here. The plan is to leverage as much of the federal funds as we can. With these type of projects, there are usually multiple, multiple funding sources. So federal funds, capital investments from the city, you know, some of that bond refinance money, as well as some, if there's IRA and ARMS up. There's typically a third-party financing unless a public entity pays in cash. Our goal is to leverage this new revolving loan fund. The only challenge is it does have some requirements, including a 10-year term. There are some utility incentives, as well as some after-tax stuff. There's a big new with the, this has changed a lot, the Section 179D. Heber Springs is not a taxable entity, but with the new laws, they're allowing this tax credit, and they're allowing this 179D to be transferred over. So there's a lot of things in the new laws that I think will help offset that. That's it. Any questions?
Good job. Thanks for attending.
So our goal was just to get that investment grade audit report and final presentation at the end of July, or January, and then I'll have the rest of our team here for that.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Beau. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we're going to get an update from Total Property Maintenance, kind of impromptu.
Impromptu. Good evening, everyone. Eric Swanson here, in case you didn't remember. We started, we picked up our grapple truck at the end of November, and had a few issues. We got them worked out. We had tags and title and everything were done that I think it was on the first and the second, and we started to work on the fifth, which was Monday. Monday, we picked up almost five tons of material, and initially, we were told that the Class 4 landfill would take it. And they did the first day. On the second day, we were told, after day, you can't do it anymore, there's too much stuff. So we've got a little bit of an issue there. This is week two, and we start, we did, we've done all of Lake Shore Drive and a few little side streets, and we are, we've got a good chunk of Ward 1 down, the far western side. And as of today, we've got about 627 cubic yards of material that we've picked up, about 95,000 pounds. So that's my update. Is, are there any questions? What are your questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. Very appreciative.
Do you have anything?
I've heard good things from constituents. I've received phone calls about you guys and that you're doing a great job and obedient.
We're trying. We've had a couple of mechanical issues. We had an alternated one out on, on water trucks, and then we also had two cylinders on the grapple truck that we had to get repaired. So a few extra little expenses, they're not that bad, but we're having fun.
So you enjoy it then?
Yes, sir. And, and thank you, Mr. Lane.
I appreciate it.
You took care of us on Monday when we started. We showed up at 8:00 a.m., and he put our logos on the side of the truck so we could be in compliance, and got magnets for the other trucks, so we're good.
So where are you going now?
Well, we ended up, one of our, one of my partners has property up in Quimby, and he's got 10 acres, and we did several loads there, and we weren't going to be able to do much longer. Your chief actually has graciously offered to temporarily allow our dumping to be there. So he's been taking care of us. And we're trying, we're, in the future, very near future, we're looking to purchase some land ourselves so we can at least do the leaves and the, and the grass clippings and do compost for that, and then we'll mulch all the branches and everything, or chip all the branches and everything.
I think once you get the first round caught up, I don't think it'll be near as bad.
I certainly don't. Right now, we're, we're swamped.
They've had a lot of challenges.
We're doing the best, yes. We've got lots of challenges.
And it's rained every day.
Yeah, the rain makes it heavier, yeah.
Yes, it does. And we've worked through the rain. I'm old retired Marine, so I'm kind of amphibious anyway.
Well, we, we able to give an update for a few months until we kind of get in a pattern and?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You don't have to call me sir.
Yeah, well, that's, that's old Marine training.
Oh, okay. Eric, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. The rezoning ordinance on its second reading.
We can do it by title only?
We can.
I think we should do that.
I move we place this zoning change ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Nancy? Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need to read the title.
And ordinance permitting the zoning map attached here, too, and for other purposes. Is that the, it?
Yep.
Okay, done.
Third reading. Next month.
Well, or in the next meeting. We'll talk about it in a second. January 11th through the 13th is Municipal League. Is anybody interested in going? And if they are, I need to let Ms. Amy know. Is it still early bird signup?
Today.
Oh, it ended today.
If I go back to the alternate sign, it will be early bird.
I'm sorry, I couldn't make up a decision that fast.
Well, January's kind of hard.
Yeah. It's close to December.
Is there a, do they have a thing of what classes they're offering yet?
It's in your City in Town magazine. Did you get it today?
It should be in last month.
Yeah, it was in last month. It was in last month, too, but it is in there today, too.
Okay. I'll go back and look at it.
I think, I think we have until December 30th.
Okay.
To sign up.
Are they doing it virtual this year, too?
They are. You can do it either way.
I would like to go. I mean, we were, we all went. Yeah, no, when we all went, we really did learn a lot, and I'd like to get back to doing that.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
It really is.
Especially for all of us to go and learn.
What I like is you meet other city council people from other cities as well, and mayors, and talk to them, well, what do y'all do on this? And so it really is good to, to go and meet people and talk about, talk to other people that have the same issues we do and find out how they do it, so.
So is the, the 11th through the 13th, what is that?
It's Wednesday, Thursday.
It's like the end of the week. It's usually like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I'll think about it. You're going to let Ms. Amy know tomorrow.
If y'all could just email me and let me know, that way I'll have it. Okay.
Next, P and Z Commission Member. I have reached out and talked to Mr. Travis Julian, and he would like to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We just need to vote him in.
Whose position is he taking?
Mr. Lanelys.
So he's going to step off A and P?
He is going to step off A and P.
So we're not going to have him head up by his?
Right, we're going to need a chairperson for A and P. So if you know anybody.
So just make a motion to approve.
Travis Julian.
Travis Julian for P and Z.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could be a good addition.
Yeah, I think he'll, he'll be great. Okay, Ms. Nancy? Okay. Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have RDOT Federal Aid for the Eighth Street Bridge. When I first got into office, I had to close it down, and I've been searching for funding ever since then, and so Biden finally released all those funds, and hopefully, we are going to get some of them. So this is a resolution to apply for the funds, and it's?
This is the 9010?
Yes.
Do we have a preliminary number on it?
Yes.
I do not.
20? You talking about a resolution number?
No, no. The scope of the project.
No, when, when Scott and I had reached out to see about getting repair, getting it repaired, it was going to be around 200,000, just to repair it.
Plus engineering, I guess.
Oh, yeah, plus all that extra stuff.
Yeah, it's right there over Silver Creek, so it's got to be started.
And it's right, yes.
Right next to Red Brick, yeah.
Yes.
So, I mean, we're talking $50,000 our portion of it, or do we know? Anywhere close?
I don't know.
It's hard to say, yeah, we don't.
Well, if we don't apply for it, then the bridge will just stay closed.
Jeez. Is this one of those ones where if we get it and don't do it, they slap us on the hand and don't ever give us money?
I mean, it's federal money.
Well, 9010's good.
A 9010's great.
Oh.
So maybe it'll be less than 200,000. And we didn't get the?
Our portion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, surely it would be less than that.
It looks kind of hokey to have one of our streets in town closed.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of a bridge that should have been repaired a long time ago.
By the county shop, and I mean, it's huge.
Yeah, it's not the county shop anymore.
Yeah, county shops.
Exactly.
The old county shop.
The old county shop.
The old county shop, yeah.
Looks like we could probably potentially cost us 50 grand, other than engineering or?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't see we'd have any choice but to apply for it.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
What resolution number would it be?
It'd be 2022-12.
Would anyone mind reading?
I'll make a motion, and you just have to read it all?
Yeah, I'll have to read it. Okay.
Resolution number 2022-12, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Heber Springs to utilize federal aid monies for the following project, Eighth Street Bridge Replacements. I don't know what the STR stands for, but number 21444. Whereas City of Heber Springs, City understands federal aid funds were available for certain local projects, and the following federal and city participating ratios per project. Type of work, work phase, federal share and city share. The bridge replacement, all phases, 90% federal, 10% city. Projects designed but never progressed to construction. Righterways and utilities, 0% federal, 100% city. Do we need to read that under portion part of it, the non-reimbursable and stuff?
No.
I guess so. Notes 1, non-reimbursable utility relocation cost will be borne solely by the owner of the utility company. 2, all utility reimbursable and non-reimbursable relocation costs will be borne by the city if the project does not proceed to construction. Whereas the city is requesting the Arkansas Department of Transportation Department making funds available to replace the Eighth Street Silver Creek Bridge, STR number 21444. And whereas the department has agreed to provide federal aid fund, federal aid funds for 90% of the cost for the feasibility study and preliminary engineering up to 30% plans. And whereas the department will assign an on-call consultant to perform the feasibility study, including preliminary engineering up to 30% plans. And whereas upon completion of the feasibility study, the city will request the addition, for additional funding for future phases as needed. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, Heber Springs, Arkansas. That, Section 1, the city will participate in accordance with its designated responsibilities in this project. Section 2, the mayor or their designated representative is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite, expedite the construction of this project. And Section 3, the city pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project.
So it looks like we only have to be 100% if we don't do it. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
If we don't.
The feasibility study, looks like the department agreed to pay federal aid funds for 90% of the cost for the feasibility study. Is that, am I reading that correctly, or am I wrong?
Yeah, this is just for the feasibility study. This is just for the, yeah. We have to ask for money later for the bridge.
Yeah.
I move we, so we had to make a motion on that?
Yes.
I move we approve the resolution.
Okay. Any discussion?
Wait, just one second.
Okay.
That, upon completion of the feasibility study, the city will request for additional Upon completion of the feasibility study, the city will request for additional funding for future phases as needed. But that does not Is that still the 90-10 at that portion?
Yeah, it says
That's what you're asking, right?
All phases, it says 90-10, I guess.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Nancy? Okay. Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have the budget resolution that I think we're gonna table so we can look over some more and have a special meeting next week. Is Tuesday okay for everybody? And I'd also like to put the rezoning ordinance on there as well.
I can do Tuesday.
Six o'clock here. Perfect.
Hey, Brian, wanna shop with the cop?
Tuesday night.
Oh, in here? You all come in here, don't you?
I don't know which round they have reserved or where, so.
Well, that'll be fun. We can just, we can go in some smaller space if we have to. That'd be fun to go see.
Yeah, we can always use a conference room if we need to.
Yeah, that's true.
It won't take us long.
I'll be shopping with the cop.
Okay.
Can Santa come to the meeting for just a minute? I'm kidding.
Yeah, dress as Santa. That'd be awesome.
Could come see us.
Yeah, we need to ask for things. Okay, next, we have bid tabulation results for Huntington and for South Seven. And I failed to put the notice of award in the first email, so I sent it late. So these just need to be approved.
Can you tell me, I don't, what is the Huntington place? What was that a part of?
Huntington, it's part of the bond.
That is, that was part of the bond? Okay.
Uh, Nick is here if you wanna ask him or if you wanna update.
No, I just didn't realize it was part of the bond. So if it is, it's fine.
Do you wanna, you wanna give a quick update? Okay.
So we bid Huntington Street improvements and South Seven Street drainage improvements last Tuesday. You can see the bid tabulations. Hopefully, everyone has a copy of those. Actually, both those bids came in really well. We're under, under budget, so there's still some proceeds left in the street bond to do an additional project if so desired. And then the South Seven Street project was one we discussed at the October meeting. So we began design, got that bid. And so those are the two projects that need to be considered for award, so.
I believe we can take it out of drainage.
Yes.
Oh, okay, we can.
It's downtown drainage.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's a smaller project that's popped up, but it would, would be eligible for that.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on those two?
Thank you. So we just need a motion to accept the bid award.
Make a motion to accept the bid award.
We'll have to do it separate. So Huntington Place?
Okay, first. Second.
Any discussion?
This is all part of the bond package.
Ally? Uh, Ally. Nancy? After all, your name is after.
Now, it's for the Bobby Kennedy construction, the top one?
For Huntington.
For Huntington Place.
I know, but Huntington, you're going with the top person.
Yeah, he got both of them.
Okay. Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Did you have something else?
No, go ahead.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Want me to do motion two?
For the Fifth Street?
Make a motion to approve Bobby Kennedy construction for $65,521 for Seventh Street improvements.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you. Nancy?
Okay, Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
And Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. I was gonna say, Mr. Kennedy's almost finished with the construction at the airport. They've had to put it on hold for a little bit because of the rain. Uh, now, I had an add-on for tonight for financing the trash trucks. But I'm still waiting for one more bank to respond. I've reached out to four. And if we can wait and do that on Tuesday, that way I can get all the information.
Didn't you have that many bids for the finance rate?
Well, they're not technically bids, but I've reached out to four banks.
How many rate shopping extravaganzas have you done?
I've got one under 5%. And I didn't bring it with me, but one was like 5.8. And I remember the other one. And still waiting on one to reach out.
Yeah, I probably don't need to say that.
Yeah, probably already say.
And are those locked in for, are those locked in to make this decision or?
Yeah, as soon as we pass it, if we can do that Tuesday, then we will do it. We'll get on it.
That's both of these?
It's for both trash trucks, correct.
So a total of approximately $400,000.
Yeah, it's almost 400,000.
That we've already
We've already approved.
Yeah, but yeah, when do they deliver in those?
Oh, you have to leave here pretty soon.
It's my better figure.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm waiting on one more bank to call me back.
So we're gonna do that then Tuesday night?
Yeah, we can table it till Tuesday, if that's okay with y'all. Okay. Um, open mic. Would anybody like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Edward Allen. And I live in Pangburn, but I'm a member of the community center here with my family. And I'm here on behalf of the kids that swim AAU under Coach Herb Brill. I'm sure you're aware that there was an incident here two weeks ago where Mr. Brill correctly pointed out a health hazard in the swimming pool. And the person that was discussing that with him basically told him to call the mayor, and he thought that was an inappropriate response. And there was a heated argument. Voices were raised, but there was no threatening behavior. There was no profanity. There was no foul language, nothing like that. And my kid was there when that happened. And 30 minutes later, Mr. Brill was issued a warning, which amounted to pretty much a restraining order and was kicked out of the building and told if he showed up here within the next 30 days, he'd be arrested. Let me tell you, this guy's been driving from Ward to here four days a week to teach kids swimming, to coach them in swimming. He's losing money doing it. It doesn't even, what the parents pay him doesn't even cover his gas money. So he does it for the kids and for the love of the sport. And I think what happened to him was an injustice. And I think cooler heads should prevail, and perhaps we should re-invite Mr. Brill back and let him coach his team and maybe with some ground rules on how to interact with people at the community center, but
Can you explain further? Was it employee who got the heated argument?
It was.
Her name is Kim. And, um, they both raised their voices, but you gotta kinda raise your voice in the swimming pool anyway because they play like 60s and 70s rock and roll music in there, and it's like a big echo chamber. But, um, anyway, Mr. Brill has been doing this for well over 30 years. He's never had a problem anywhere else that he's been. And according to the community center rules of conduct, in order to kick somebody out, they're entitled to two warnings, and that never happened. Right now, he would be here to discuss this himself, but he couldn't come because he'd be arrested if he set foot on the property. So I'm just asking for cooler heads to prevail and give this guy a chance to coach his kids.
Is the rest of the swim team parents in agreement that they would, I mean, were any of them upset or wanted him to not coach?
Well, let me clarify because
Yeah, I guess I'm
I'm the one that had him
If it was the parents or if it was just, yeah, I guess I'm
Well, and I don't really know that this needs to be discussed at this meeting, but there have been a few instances with Mr. Brill and some community center members. And I waited until after the swim lesson to address the issue. And the reason he has to speak to the mayor is because we do not have a Parks and Direct Director at this time. He doesn't start until January the 3rd. And, um, I suspended his membership and terminated his contract because he has not paid us the second half of his contract yet. And he has a chance to come back, but he has to talk with the new Parks Director or myself, and it's up to him to set up that meeting.
He was in the process of trying to renegotiate that contract because the contract entitled to him to four lanes for two hours, four days a week. And he was paying 100 bucks a month to get that, and he was told by Stacy that he could only have two lanes. And so the city wasn't honoring its half of the contract to begin with. And what he wanted to do was prorate the amount that he had to pay because he's losing money just driving here, teaching these kids. This is all about the kids, and they're the ones who are truly losing in this situation.
Well, I was unaware of the renegotiation of the contract, but from what I understand, he only has two students right now that he coaches.
Yeah, but he's open to more all the time. He just, he has one that was coming for a little while. I don't know if that boy is ever gonna come back again. One of his students is my kid. The other one is Casey Armour's kid, Emma. And, yeah, he's a small teen, but these kids, you know, swimming to AAU is how they get really good. These are the kids that are gonna be your top swimmers on your high school team someday.
I understand, but
It sounds like to me that, so for city council, we don't have any, anything on hiring and firing anybody. So that would have to be a conversation with Casey, the mayor. Because, I mean, I'm glad that we're aware of this and you brought it to our attention. But when it comes to any of the hiring and firing and who she wants to hire to do anything in the city, that's, that's up to the mayor. So we, as city council members, we don't really get a say in that. So I think the best thing will probably be to have a meeting with you or, and then, and maybe wait till you get a new, we get our new department head in that place and maybe see if they can work something out.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a little bit disturbing if you have a disagreement with a city employee and they can call the mayor and the police in and you get canceled. Boom, you're done. You're gone for a month. And you know that, how that negotiation's gonna go when he comes back to try and re-get his contract. You know how that's gonna go. You guys aren't gonna hire him again.
What was the problem to start with?
It sounds like
The problem was the pool was overfilled and the perimeter gutter system wasn't allowed to function properly because the pool was filled all the way up to the rim. So the filtration system couldn't operate as, as it's designed to operate. And this guy is a certified pool operator, so he knows how swimming pools work. And, you know, somebody's supposed to be maintaining that. It's been overfilled a couple of times. And they, you know, there's an older gentleman that works in the pool that tries to bring it down, but it's a health hazard. And he's just looking out for the health of his swimmers.
Yeah, I understand that. But Mr. Brill also needs to learn how to conduct himself. That's my issue. So thank you for addressing the council.
Thank you.
And we've got the PoPAC deal that's coming up. That's gonna be, a lot of it's gonna be handled.
It's a long story. We can dismiss it later.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, on a high note, I would like to present Mr. Foster with this plaque. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the city.
How many years have you been on?
Uh, 12 years.
And Ms. Sharon?
This was her. How many, how many Sharon?
50s?
She's under five years.
Years, and this is 30 years. 30 years.
Thank you, guys. Okay, for announcements, all I really have is Merry Christmas and Happy New Year's. Do y'all have anything?
Tuesday, on Tuesday.
Tuesday, 6:00. We'll find a room.
Let's get a motion.
Yes, please. Can you say it louder?
We're done.